Good evening, welcome to the council meeting of November 4th. If anyone in the audience is amplifying headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. Not seeing any, let's rise for the pledge, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Bush?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Here.
Mayor Nisco?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Saab?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Thank you, Mary. Do you have any late changes to the agenda? We want to add five more items? No? Okay. City manager, any late changes?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have any council board reports to share? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. All right, the council must publish may comments on any matters of city business comments shall be of the entire council, not individual council members. Please refrain from any personal or disrespectful remarks that create disruption of the meeting. If unreasonable disruptive conduct continues, be asked to leave the meeting. Mary, anyone sign up for public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is me, Doitt.
Good evening. I'm here tonight because our city continues to face ongoing violations of our own ordinances. It is time we hold ourselves accountable for enforcing the laws already on the books. Every day, residents see people camping overnight in our parks, and a clear violation of park hours and rules. These same areas are left littered with trash, drug paraphernalia, and human waste. Our families, children, and seniors deserve safe, clean parks, but right now, many avoid them entirely. We also see sidewalks and public right of ways blocked, forcing pedestrians, wheelchair users, and parents with strollers into the street. This is not only a violation of local ordinances, it's also an ADA violation and accessibility issue. By allowing these obstructions to persist, we're failing both our citizens and our legal obligation. City code, state code prohibits camping on public property outside of designated areas, if there is any, yet the practice continues openly, day after day, with no consistent enforcement. Meanwhile, our park staff, public works, and law enforcement are left frustrated, and residents are losing faith that the city means what they say when it passes an ordinance. This is not about lacking compassion, it's about restoring order, safety, and accountability. We can enforce our laws while connecting individuals to services, but doing nothing helps no one. It allows unsafe conditions to spread, discourages investment, and drive residents and visitors away from our downtown and our neighborhoods. We've spent years talking about studies, task forces, and new programs, but the truth is, we don't need new laws, we need to enforce the ones we already have. Tonight, I'm asking for three things. Number one, consistent enforcement of park and camping ordinances. Two, a clear policy for clearing sidewalk obstructions and restoring ADA access. Three, accountability from city leadership with regular public reporting on violations and enforcement actions so residents can see the progress. Our community wants to be proud of our city again, to see clean parks, open sidewalks, and safe public spaces. That starts with leadership, that takes action, action, not just discussion. We already all know that. I have not telling anybody anything that they do not already know that I haven't said a hundred times again. Just this last week, we had a fire on Front Street that the fire department had to show up on. We had a fire on the sidewalk behind the Cantina. We had a fire on Brewer Park where they're burning leaves. We had defecation going on in the alleys. I mean, come on, guys, we gotta wake up and do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all that we have signed up, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We have a presentation tonight, an award for wastewater treatment plant in the Department of Ecology.
My name is Dynas Khybergs, and I'm an environmental engineer with the Department of Ecology. One of my roles is a permit manager for various wastewater treatments in the state of Washington. Two of those treatment plants are the Shelton Wastewater Treatment Plant and the Shelton Water Reformation Plant. In addition to writing the permit and reviewing fact sheets and things like engineering reports, we also review what we call monthly monitoring reports. Every facility, every wastewater treatment plant is required to submit a wastewater or monthly monitoring report that basically shows that they are following the requirements of the permit. There are many, many constituents that need to be tested, and they need to be tested more often, sometimes daily, sometimes weekly, sometimes monthly. It's a very difficult thing to do for a facility to basically meet its permit requirements consistently. It takes a lot of dedication from its staff and from its cities or counties that run the facility. Shelton has done a wonderful job. This year, for both facilities, they had zero violations for the year 2014. So what I have here is basically an outstanding performance award. This is the third one in a row for the Shelton Reformation Facility. And I have another one here for the Shelton Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is five years of no violations. So I present this to, basically, I'm not sure if either the staff or the guys.
Brent, if you can. Brent, if you can say a couple of words and introduce some of the staff that work at our plants, did some important work.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Brent Armstrong, Assistant Public Works Director. These awards are really the pride and dedication of the work that the crews do. Lucas Moody for one is the field supervisor. We have Eric Osseth, Assistant Field Supervisor. Ethan Evans is a Tech One, going to be testing for a Tech Two. Bill Walker is certified Level One, and Bartly Hill, that is a Level Three operator. It's just that it's showing how they care, they come in when it's the worst weather, that's when we have the most problems at the treatment plant, and their dedication to keeping us within our permit levels. So this is really their work.
All right, Mark, if you want to say anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things, Council. These are dedicated city employees that work outside of, you know, City Hall at our treatment plant. It's not that, you've all been there, right? It's not the best environment to work in, but if you see them, you're down there, it's like a well-run, well-held machine, they know exactly what to do. As Brent Armstrong said, in the middle of the night, they get the call, they're on shift because they take this very seriously, and it's very serious work, and it's work that is critical to a community like ours. It's just one of our pieces that, you know, of the large puzzle of a municipality, so I just want to express my gratitude to those individuals as well, because this is a very important part of our community.
This is a big deal, this is awesome. Thanks, you guys.
Comments?
Just thank you for the work that you do, for keeping our bay clean, for keeping the water clean, and for being there for us when times get tough and when stuff over points. So thanks, thanks so much for all that you do, and especially with our environment and the quality of our water. Thank you.
Thank you also for all your hard work and dedication to it. I hear Mr. Moody got some new certifications recently as well, and I know that year after year after year, this is really special. I've been to some conferences where some cities aren't even at our level, so this is really appreciated. You guys keep up, good work.
Great job, guys, keep it up. I like seeing five-year awards, those are all good things, keep rocking it, guys. Thank you.
All right, let's do it again. All right, we have some proclamations tonight. Councilman Gilmore is going to read the first one.
Proclamation for City of Shelton Operation Green Light for Veterans. Whereas the residents of the City of Shelton have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas the City of Shelton seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, religious and civil service groups, and whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas the City of Shelton appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted, therefore be it resolved. With designation as a Green Light for Veterans, the City of Shelton hereby declares November 4th through 11th as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service, therefore be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, the City of Shelton encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who have made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence, to be signed by the mayor this day, the 4th of November.
Thank you. And we also have two veterans on our council, council member and Councilmember Gilmore, and sorry, I'm having brain drain today, so thank you, guys, for serving.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Nisco, the city installed green lights on front of the Civic Center earlier this week, and unfortunately, they're not working tonight. We will get those working tomorrow, so we'll have green lights at the entrance, outside the Civic Center, so we can recognize that throughout the month of November. So those will stay up, not just through November 4th, but through November 11th. So please, as you're coming by the Civic Center, entering the Civic Center now that it's a little darker, we'll have green lights out front to recognize our veterans that are transitioning to civilian life.
Does anybody else have anything?
I also want to remind us that we have reached functional zero for homelessness for veterans here in the city by having the New Horizons complex, and that we need to work together to make sure that functional zero happens for everybody, not just our veterans. But that's one thing that we can look and point towards, that this is something, this is a project of cooperation that we can continue to do to make sure that not only our veterans are being cared about, everyone in the city.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have another proclamation, White Cane Awareness Day proclamation, and I'll read that one. Whereas white cane, which every blind citizen of Shelton, Washington has a right to carry, demonstrates and symbolizes ability to achieve a full and independent life and the capacity to work productively in a competitive employment. And whereas the white cane, by allowing every blind person to move freely and safely from place to place, makes it possible for the blind to fully participate and contribute to our society and the lives they want. And whereas every citizen should be aware that the laws require that motorists, cyclists exercise appropriate caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane. And whereas Washington state law also calls upon employers, both public and private, to be aware and utilize the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capabilities. And now, therefore, the City of Shelton Council does hereby proclaim November 4th, 2025, as White Cane Awareness Day in the City of Shelton, and I'll sign that tonight. And Bill, would you like to say some, a few words?
I always like to say a few words.
All right.
All right. Is there a microphone that, can you hear me okay?
I think, I think we're.
Sounds like, there you go. All right. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for allowing me to say a few words on behalf of the White Cane Day proclamation. 1964, our President Lyndon Johnson declared October 15th as White Cane Awareness Day, and every president since has upheld that day for recognition for the White Cane Awareness Day. Now, one of the wonderful things that you have in Shelton is a Lions Club that supports not only the white cane, but vision projects. And part of that, of those vision projects is presenting to your local third graders a children's book called Grandpa's White Cane, which explains why grandpa uses a white cane to the third graders. If you have not been to your elementary school and had an opportunity to talk to your future, I encourage you to do that. Those third graders are the most awesome little critters you ever encountered. Now, one thing that is going on right now, I have a new project that I would encourage everybody to take, I'm gonna leave this, these on the back table if that's all right, and it's called a Vision Etiquette. And on this paper, it folds up into a tri-fold, and you use a glue stick to put it together. If you've got a favorite cafe, or a restaurant, or your church, I would encourage you to put this up, and what it does is it gives you the etiquette of how to approach or interact with somebody using a white cane or a guide dog. So please take the time to take a few of these if you have a spot for them, and put them up. It's a passive way of teaching everyone how to do that, to interact with somebody that has his blind or location. All right, I think that's good. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay. Wrong one, can't sit in your lap.
All right, now we're on to a business agenda. Our first item is from City Manager Mark Ziegler for information about a grant.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I apologize, I don't remember the exact date when Chief Bakken and Abe Gardner with North Mason Regional Fire Authority visited us to talk about the Mobile Integrated Health Program, but I think we had overwhelming support that that was of interest to continue that service and expand that service within the City of Shelton, and so I have two agenda items for you tonight to consider. The first is the award of Association of Washington City's Grant to the City of Shelton to help support that Mobile Integrated Health Program in Shelton area. The grant is for $168,774.97. It is only applicable through June 30th of 2026, unfortunately, but there may be another grant program, or another funding source, or a window open again for the next fiscal year. But again, the Mobile Integrated Health Program is a health delivery program that aims to increase rapid access to medical and mental health and substance use disorder care. They engage individuals to stabilize their current situation by attending to immediate mental, physical, and social health needs. Once that incident is stabilized, the team works to identify additional resources to appropriately, and with other community partners, to appropriately pass those people off, if you will, or get them to continual care. Referrals are accepted for the Mobile Integrated Health Program, aids in rapid access to health care for individuals, many of these individuals are, they're in the system, if you will, or they're frequent callers to 911 for emergency services, they're in need of services on a regular basis, and they don't necessarily have those resources to get them out of that. Our normal EMS service just doesn't have the tools available to them, right? They're providing some immediate care, stabilizing somebody, and then again, they're stable, they're moving on to the next, to the next call. In this instance, we've got some follow-up with these individuals. So the grant applied for, forgive me, I have to recognize Abe Gardner, who put a lot of this together because he's got a lot of experience that I don't have, and so, and Abe and Bo are here as well, if they can answer any further questions, if you have any. But this grant was to cover essentially two more positions within the Mobile Integrated Health Program. The first is a Certified Peer Support Specialist, so that's somebody with lived experience in recovery, behavioral health conditions, substance abuse, housing instability, provides authentic trust-building support to individuals who are often underserved by traditional systems. The, really, the key responsibilities of that is the engagement, navigation support, crisis stabilization, any follow-up and coordination with those individuals, recovery planning, right? Like I talked about, it's making sure those people are getting the resources where they're going to get stabilized and get the services they need to get out of that system and that continuum. And then outreach, and then obviously documentation. We have some documentation requirements with AWC with the grant. We also want to document this to essentially justify and certify that this is a service that is reducing some of our ER visits and some of the other EMS calls that we're seeing to hopefully reduce some of those costs and reduce some of the burden on those services. The other position is the Behavioral Health and Homeless Services Systems Coordinator. So this is designed to strengthen both the direct and service capacity, system-level coordination response to the growing complexity of this issue. So much of it is homelessness, as we all know. So this position, you know, it's that kind of that gap within, we've got some mental health professionals, substance abuse professionals, but we don't have that overarching kind of coordinator position that's going to, it's going to run things, work with peers and other providers to make sure there's connections made, and do a lot of the data collection and things like that that we need from, throughout the Mobile Integrated Health Program. Again, this grant is available now for the City of Shelton, we can start billing against that now. It's $168,774.97, bringing it to you tonight to potentially move forward to the November 18th action agenda.
Do we have any questions for Bo or Abe? This is already a successful program being run in North Mason already. How long have you been running it in North Mason?
Three years.
Three years. So, do you have any questions?
I just want to say thank you for your hard work with us.
And this also is reducing hospital visits and probably saving resources in the hospital as well. Perfect.
Would there be any benefit to just waiving the three-touch rule and clearing this today?
We can get the paperwork done quicker and get it off to AWC, certainly.
I move to amend to waive the three-touch rule and approve as written today.
Let me get a reading first, and then we'll do that motion, okay?
Okay.
Reading, Mary, I believe, 1407-1025.
Resolution number 1407-1025, a resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, accepting the Association of Washington City's Alternative Response Cane Grant.
Thank you, Mary. Now, I'll take the motion.
Do we need an original motion first?
No, you can just add it on to that if you want.
All right, I move to amend and change and adopt this today. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to place Resolution Number 1407-1025 on November 18th, 2025 agenda, and waiving the three-touch rule for further consideration, never mind, I'll just leave that out. It's approved.
All right, we have to vote on it.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Your motion is to adopt resolution.
Adopt resolution.
There we go.
There we go.
You want it restated?
Me?
Do we want it restated?
No, I got it.
Okay.
It worked.
All right. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have another item from Mark.
Yeah, so Mayor, this is part two of this project, so this is the actual inter-local agreement with North Mason Regional Fire Authority for the Certified Peer Support Specialist. So this inter-local agreement would memorialize the city and North Mason Regional Fire Authority's relationship with North Mason Regional Fire Authority hiring and providing a Certified Peer Support Specialist. The city would pay for that service through the grant from AWC that you just approved.
All right. They were reading of Resolution Number 1413-1025.
Resolution number 1413-1025, a resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the City Manager to sign an inter-local agreement with North Mason Regional Fire Authority for a Mobile Integrated Health Program.
Mr. Mayor, can I move to waive the three-touch rule and adopt this tonight?
Second.
All right, comments or questions? We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 1413-1025, waiving the three-touch rule. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't, Abe or Bo, if you want 10 seconds or 30 seconds, I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
No, we were talking about the opposite.
I didn't want to waste your trip down to Shelton.
No, 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 thank you, it just allows us to get working that much faster. We, with the hiring announcement tomorrow, we just voted, thank you for having faith in us, we're going to make some different moves.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I will clarify, the other option is if the AWC grant isn't available, we're not successful on June 30th, there's something we can come back to the council to utilize the opioid settlement funds for, it's an appropriate use of those funds, so we want to make sure that, you know, six months of this work simply isn't enough to make a difference, and we really want to have this continued long-term, so if that grant is successful, we want to continue to do that. And then there's other partners we can build in this relationship to hopefully support this even longer than those funds that we currently have in place.
Sounds great. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we have another one from Mark.
Excuse me one second, scrolling down. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, as you know, in 2017, the City of Shelton entered into an agreement with Mason County Garbage, a 20-year agreement for collection and proper disposal of solid waste, recyclables, and yard waste. Per that agreement, annually, Mason County Garbage can adjust their rates accordingly per the CPI for the period of October to October. That isn't available quite yet, hasn't been released yet. That does have a floor of 2.5% and a max of 4.5% for the first 10 years. Subsequent 10 years increase shall be the CPI with, you know, no floor or ceiling. Tipping fees, which are at the landfill that Mason County determines, are passed through to the customers at that time. Any unforeseen costs as in the contract, any unforeseen costs that the contractor, Mason County Garbage, may see that affects their services, they're able to come back to the city to request those increases. Those might be taxes, government fees, surcharges that, you know, that weren't in place at the time of the contractor might come forward. Most recently, the legislature put in place a business and operation tax effective October 1st for service industries, which Mason County Garbage is. It affects IT services, public speakers, and similar services like that at the same It affects IT services, public speakers, and similar services like that at the same time. The anticipated, it's a 0.35% business occupation tax on services. The estimated increase is 12 cents per month for residential customer and 22 cents for commercial customer per month. Chad White, the Site Manager for Mason County Garbage is here as well and can answer any further questions about, about this request.
We have any questions from Chad? Yes, not. May we read a resolution number 1409-1025?
Resolution number 1409-1025, a resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing Mason County Garbage Company to increase solid waste recycling rates in the City of Shelton effective January 1, 2026.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to place resolution number 1409-1025 on the November 18th council agenda for further consideration.
Is there a second? I'll second it. It's, I mean, they have a fee that was passed on to them by the state, so I, you know, I think that we're all subject to that, so.
Do we know when the CPI update is going to be out roughly?
It's in the next couple of weeks, I believe.
Yeah, it should be, should be right around 17.
Yeah.
And if you, if you want a general idea, the August, August was 2.8. It's going to be close to that, you know, I'm not going to say that it's going to be exact. It could go up or down, you know, but it, it'll be roughly in that range, so.
Yeah, I was looking at it earlier, and it was like 2.4 for a lot of the year, and then almost 3 for a little bit more. I was just curious.
Just 2.8 in August. The transfer station will be 2.8. They've already passed that, so just so you know that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion in the second to place resolution number 1409-1025 on November 18th council action agenda for further consideration. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. All right. Our next interim community economic developer, Jason Doze, has information for us about updating the municipal-related special events.
Yeah, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, Council. I think a pretty straightforward ask here. What we're recommending here is amendment to Chapter 5.46 of the Shelton Municipal Code that covers special events, you know, things like forest festival, parades, that sort of thing. What it does not address are special events, public events that might occur inside buildings. What we're proposing is that we amend the ordinance to include what we're defining as special use of buildings. And what this means is, you know, if you're going to have like a holiday event, a haunted house, you know, a cultural event inside a building, that it does not have occupancy for that. As an example, you might have like a storage structure where somebody wants to hold a holiday event, or like a farmer's market for a period of time. Can't think of anything else right offhand, but you, you get the idea. It's, the, the building isn't actually approved, doesn't have sprinklers for this sort of thing, there are building and fire concerns that may arise by changing what's called the occupancy from, in this case, like a storage use to more of a higher human occupancy situation. What we would like to be able to do is have kind of bumpers for our fire and building department to be able to review these site, these types of events, you know, because we do periodically get asked for these things, and we are currently reviewing a request right now for, for a holiday event. That said, we're not proposing any major changes to the ordinance, just adding a definition of what special use of building would be, clarifying the zones it could be done in, you know, largely that's the commercial zones, industrial zones. Wouldn't want these sorts of things to occur in our strictly residential zones for compatibility reasons. It does put some bumpers, sidebars, if you will, for the length of time and duration of events, but that's really about it. What we're asking is that you put this ordinance forward to your next regular meeting for action. I, I should say that we did receive some very good comments from the Chamber of Commerce. They're in support of this ordinance. They like the fact that it, it can help expand, you know, some of the use of maybe vacant buildings in town for a period of time as it relates to events. They did have some very constructive comments that we, we would like to be able to consider. I did get them a little bit late, so they didn't get included in this draft, but I want to go over them with the fire official, building official, and see if there's maybe a few of these things we might be able to incorporate into the final version. But we are asking that you consider it and move it to the next regular meeting for potential action.
Thank you, Jason. May we have a reading of ordinance number 2036-1025?
Ordinance number 2036-1025, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending Chapter 5.46 of the Shelton Municipal Code relating special events and special use of buildings.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to forward ordinance number 2036-1025 to the action agenda for the Council's November 18th, 2025 regular meeting.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions?
I think this is a great idea.
Yep. Great idea. I mean, we're, we have all of our special events and our Christmas and our Halloween and our forest festival, and it's just, it's, it's, to bring more people in, I think it's great, you know? Hopefully, somebody puts a little, little one of those little fake ice rinks in one of these buildings, so we can have a little ice skating. Would be kind of nice, but intent, somebody. But, no, great idea. So, any other comments?
We need more events to get people outside, to touch grass, and just get outside and breathe fresh air. And codifying this gives us an opportunity to make sure it's also safe, and that everyone gets home safely after the event.
All right. We have a motion in the second to forward ordinance number 2036-1025 to the action agenda on the November 18th regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Exciting stuff. All right. Our last business item is an update of reclaim water tank project. Assistant Public Director Aaron Nix has details.
Mayor, Council, thank you. This is another project we're ready to go, to get out, to get constructed. I'm just supplying you with, this is our touch here, giving you some background. This is the half-million gallon tank that we're going to place at the MDR facility. Obviously, we've got some awards. This is the alternate membrane facility up on the hill. We, we opened the bids, we did a pre-bid meeting on October 14th, and then bids were due on the 28th. We received four bids. Currently, we're evaluating all of them and have not made a decision yet on which, how we'll be forward yet with that. But I just wanted to bring this forward to you so that you have an idea about the project. I've talked to you in the past about this, there's some, if you remember, we did some mitigation out there with regard to the gophers, those things. That, that project is complete. Now we're ready to, to move forward with this. The engineer's estimate was about 2.7 million for this project, and we got a range of about 2.2 up to 2.9. So, no decisions tonight. Just wanted to bring that forward to make you aware of bidding process, and that we're continuing to consider. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to place the reclaimed water tank project on the action agenda on the November 18th, 2025 council meeting for further consideration.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions?
So these are funds backed from ARCA 2021?
These are not, they're not ARCA funds. They're, they were a legislative appropriation that we received, so yes. And that one amount was about $2 million.
Okay.
What is this reclaimed water tank for?
So as we produce this material, currently, we, it's an inline system, meaning that we have to clean it, treat it, and then send it. We don't have the ability to store it. And so as there's increases in the demand for this, and that's the idea with this, ultimately we will have the opportunity to store product and sell much more, because we will have an inventory of it sitting for it with us onsite right there.
What's the demand look like now for that?
Say that again.
What's the demand?
Uh...
Right, it's here. The corrections center uses it, and the state patrol would use it right now, and then Tractor Supply has a further irrigation system. But potential uses could be any development out there that reclaim water can, obviously, it's not portable, so you can't trick it, but it can be used for landscaping areas, state patrol uses for the track, turn it over to keep for laundry, toilets, uses like that.
Yeah, and the other option is actually putting it back in the ground, not, with the understanding that Tribe has really kind of supported this project in the past here. So they would li, I think they would like us to move more to this as opposed to putting it back in the ground and not sending it out to the bay. So that's why I think they're pretty much an advocate. To answer your question, we're not at full capacity yet, but as we get more customers, we will.
This takes...
I'm just curious, is there a better? Can we use that money for anything else, water-related?
I think this is pretty much dedicated to, the grant application spelled out a 500, or 500,000 gallon tank for this. So the answer is probably no. We'd probably end up giving the money back.
And this takes the, takes the demand off of the portable water, drinking water, by not, by, like, say Patrol, if they didn't have this, they would be using our drinking water.
Correct. That's the idea. The idea, again, is we don't want to, currently, all, most of, a lot of our wastewater goes to the main plant, it's all discharged. There's an issue with Goldsboro Creek and rehydrating it because we keep, not we, but everybody's sucking it out. The idea is to put it back into the ground to help fish runs, those kinds of things. So that's the intent. But it is, I mean, ecologically, it's a, it's a positive thing in the sense that it's helping, helping the ground and helping us become more sustainable, I guess.
The only reason I brought it up wasn't because I was questioning, it was because I'd like to see, if we can build a freshwater tank, I'd take that any day of the week over a, over this, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
That's why, you know, we have improvements that we need to do and that sort of thing.
That's a very good point. So yes, that's, I agree.
All right.
The funding source is specific to, correct?
This, that's correct. That's correct.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion in the second to place the reclaimed water tank project award on the action agenda for November 18th. Council meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're setting out of a regular meeting to open a public hearing. Ordinance of 2026, Adverorium interim director Terry Snitzer has his motion for this.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, tonight we bring you the ordinance for the 2026 regular city adverorium and EMS adverorium taxes. Statutorily, we need, we are required to bring this to you and for you to agree to the 1% increase. And we are allowed to do the 1% increase because the implicit price deflator was at 2.44%. So this allows us to collect the full 1% without a requirement to find a substantial need. So, so with that, our, the city's regular levy property tax is expected to be $2,320,565.48. These figures are given to us by the Mason County Assessor's Office, and they are preliminary numbers. Knowing that their numbers will come out, but because of our publishing requirements to council and to the public, we do not, we do not have those numbers yet. So this is an increase of about $22,915.85 from 2025 highest lawful levy. And, and also another note is that the new construction and the estimated state assessed property are the 25, 2025 numbers that was given to us by the Assessor's Office because we, they don't have those numbers to give us yet for 20, for the new 2026. And for the EMS levy, it is set at $590,650.69, which is about $5,832.75 from 2025 highest lawful levy. And with that, if you have any questions that we have to answer them.
Mary, may we have a reading of ordinance number 2034-1025?
Excuse me. Ordinance number 2034-1025, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, studying the amount of the annual adverorium taxes in the City of Shelton calendar year 2026.
Thank you, Mary. Nice to get public comment. Is there any public comment on the adverorium?
No, we didn't, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move forward ordinance number 2034-1025 to the November 18th council meeting for further consideration at the next public hearing.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions? All right. We have a motion in the second to forward ordinance number 2034-1025 to the November 18th council meeting for the consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed, and we're opening another public hearing. We have another ordinance from Terry.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members.
I think it's coming up here. Hopefully, there it is.
Anybody in the audience? We also have provided the budget proposal out on the table with a summary, if you're interested. So...
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, I'm going to start us off just traditionally a letter to the residents of the City of Shelton, the council, outlining kind of the 2026 budget process. As you know, we've talked about this several times, starting back in, in May of this year with a service-level discussion, followed up with several study sessions as well, to get to this point of presenting you a, a preliminary or proposed 2026 budget. We really follow the city's strategic goals in public safety, maintaining our, our infrastructure and our assets, and maintaining a workforce. So as you see, there's additions to public safety within this, within this budget with one patrol officer and two new vehicles for our police department, continuing to enhance our community's safety, enhance response times, and modernizing our fleet. We have two vehicles that are, that these replace that, Chief told me earlier today, they're, they're old. Let's just put it that way. Public defense, we're seeing increases in public defense across where, we've talked about that with defense standards changing over time. It's, it's a seller's market, if you will. We're lucky enough to have a local public defense firm that has been offering public defense here in this community for a number of years. And actually, the last two-year contract did not have any price escalators within it. So we'll have a new contract due here in the next few weeks with our public defender that will have some increases that are associated in this, in this 2026 budget. Information technology is, is one of our, our weak points in municipal government. If we don't, if we don't address that on a regular basis, we have a lot of liability in place. So strategic investments in that hardware, modernizing our infrastructure, improving our cybersecurity, and supporting efficient services for our community are really important, and maintaining those services are included in this 2026 budget. Transportation infrastructure, we recognize the commitment our community made by passing the transportation benefit district back in, back in August. We also recognize that those costs keep increasing, as you have heard time and time again about what it costs to pave a road or replace a sidewalk. So we're, we're utilizing other funds besides that transportation benefit district to make, make sure that we're maintaining our infrastructure, we're maintaining our payment condition index at the same time. We are decreasing the general fund allocation this year, proposed in '26 from, from '25 from $400,000, $200,000, but maintaining that level with a $200,000 transfer from real estate excise tax funds. That maintains more available funds within our general fund for public safety and other services, but it does diminish, you know, the available REIT funds over time. So it's not a, it's not a long-term solution, it's, it's an opportunity in 2026 to maintain our street fund and those, those projects that we have in front of us. Workforce stability, again, I feel like I'm, I'm, you know, beating that drum all the time, and I apologize for that, but it's, it's paramount to me to maintain a workforce, maintain the institutional knowledge we have, provide the training and professional development necessary, so we have a, we have a, a team here that continues to serve our community appropriately, making sure that we're competitive in the market, providing a benefit and pay package that is competitive and it retains employees. We have a lot of employees that live here and will work here no matter what. I don't want to take advantage of that. I want people still to be, to be compensated fairly. So we're, we're including cost of living increases within this, within this proposed budget as well. Long-term... Long-term stability, sustainability is, is my concern. We've talked about, again, the, our, our revenue, which are based on basically three, three streams, property tax, sales tax and BNO tax, and they're really consistent. That's great. We, we don't see, you know, ebbs and flows within that, but they're just not as consistent as price increases as well. So long-term stability is the key. That's why you have not, you will not see the other positions that we talked about in the, in the study session, the HR analyst, the public works admin assistant and the police lieutenant included in this budget because long-term stability, sustainability as we look out past 2026 utilizes our, the entirety of our unreserved fund balance very quickly. The direction from council was to utilize $1.1 million of in-fund balance, of unreserved fund balance, that's on top of our 20% statutory fund balance. We continue presenting that to you tonight and that, that gets us into 27 with a little bit of, of runs or fund balance for a cushion, if you will, for emergencies or, or anything else that, that comes about and gives us a little flexibility. But with those, with those ongoing FTEs, that just diminishes to the point that I'm not comfortable proposing that to the council tonight. So as we move forward through the presentation tonight, we'll, we won't go through the entire budget book here, but we will hit the highlights. We've got public works staff over here to talk about utilities and those services because we didn't talk about that specifically in the study session. And we're, you know, we want this to be an ongoing conversation. We have a couple more meetings to talk about this. So please, the intent here is to present this to council, answer any questions you have, but have, you go back, read, read the documents, set up meetings with myself, Terry, anybody else, we can answer the questions to you and continue to inform you. So you're best able to make the decision to approve this, this budget as presented to you in a future council meeting. So Terry, I'll get over to you and I've got the general, oh, actually, all funds.
I would just like to take this opportunity to thank, give a special thank you to Hannah Maragla, who is, wait. There we go. So she is our budget coordinator, grant administrator, and she has worked right alongside me and, but she is the one who is responsible to give you this document to, to read through. And I appreciate all of her efforts because it's been a long five months, but you know, we're, we're here. So, but I also want to thank, you know, our, our departments, the, the directors and because there's been multiple phone calls, multiple emails and meetings to get to this point. So I appreciate all of their patience. They've, you know, given us all of the, you know, good constructive thoughts and about how to get this budget completed and bring to you tonight. So with that, so for our 2026 budget, I'm on page three, which is, and it shows the total expenditures for all funds, which is, excuse me, 37,528, 37,528,000.
That's a better number.
Yeah. Sorry. Had to put my glasses on. So with the general fund being almost 17, 17 million. And so I'm going to just jump into the general fund, which is going to page four and five. But with your document that you have, I put together a budget proposal summary of the booklet so that we can maybe streamline it a little better because the, the items that are highlighted in the yellow are what we discussed on September 23rd at the study session. So if you don't mind, we can accept those as they are and then discuss what all the other items. Okay? Great. So for the general fund that we have, again, proposed almost 17 million and, but our revenue is expected to be about 15,800,000. So we are using the 1.1 million of ending fund balance. And throughout page four, you will also see that all the other funds are pretty much using ending fund balance also, mostly for projects and, and one-time expenditures. I did want to touch a little bit on the FTEs and Mark may chime in here, but we wanted to note that the city manager's office is down 0.5 FTE and then the police department increased by 1 FTE. So overall, just an increase of a half FTE throughout the city. So this budget is developed with this, pretty much the same staff levels as in 2025. Did you want to touch?
I, I will. I just want to, I'll, I'll point out in 2023, 69.45 FTEs within the general fund were at 66.83. Those include two, two department director positions at that time that are no longer filled within the city. So services and, and requests for services continue to increase. Our community continues to ask for increased services and increased service levels and we're doing that with, with less staff than we did that in, in 2023. So we recognize that, but we are addressing public safety the best we can, adding staff there to continue to maintain that as the council's priority.
So then on this summary sheet, I'll just go down. So the city clerk, we didn't, and the column with the dollars is just new additional requests. So, but the city clerk, they didn't have any new additional, but they did have a decrease and that was due to the, the reorg between the clerk's office and the city manager.
So we, we combined the communication specialist and the clerk position and, and added a confidential administrative assistant. So obviously puts a little more burden on, on the clerk themselves. So you may see a little less communication coming out of the city, but we felt like there's, there's critical services within the clerk's office, including public records that are highly, have high liability as well as support for the council, open public meetings, minutes, records and, and support of the manager's office at the same time. And those are our priorities, priorities within that department.
So within the city manager's budget, we added 168,775 to, for the mobile integrated health program that was also mentioned earlier tonight. But 88,775 is a transfer from the opioid settlement money that we've been receiving. So portion of that is paid for by that settlement money.
And that's to reflect the second half of the year when the grant expires. And obviously we wouldn't need that if we're successful in the next iteration of the grant.
And then Mark's been talking to council, you know, for, for many months now that the increase of public defense professional services, we need to add that $50,000 for continued services as well as the $40,000 for prosecutor professional services. Did you want to touch anymore, Ms.?
Street fund.
So the committee economic development, they didn't have any increases, but they did have a decrease and that was only because the comprehensive plan for 2025 was completed. So there was a big drop only because of that, that cost for that plan. And the finance department, this is more IT, 50, or we've, we've already discussed that at the, the September 23rd meeting. Fire and emergency services, this is just based off of the assessed valuation EMS. And then?
I will, yeah. I do want to jump into fire and emergency services. As you know, we have an interlocal agreement, Central Mason Fire, and it's not a favorable agreement for the City of Shelton, frankly. When that was executed back in 2016, I believe, somewhere in that, that realm, we, so we pay, the city pays, Central Mason Fire, the same property tax they would collect if they were, if they were collecting within the City of Shelton. We also provide a building and maintenance of that building, the operations, then we pay for certain apparatus, 50% of certain apparatus that are purchased as well. It's not a favorable contract for the City of Shelton. I would recommend, and I've been recommending, that we, we work towards annexation where Central Mason annexed the City of Shelton. We, we extinguished that ILA and they were, they were the taxing district for fire services within the City of Shelton. So there's leadership changes at Central Mason, so I'm not so sure that will happen over the next year or so, but I think we, Chief Snyder and I have had some discussions about that. I want to continue those discussions so we tee that up so we can, we can get to a point where the board, Central Mason Board and the county, the city council can have some discussions about earnestly going to a vote of the, of the residents within Central Mason Fire as well as the City of Shelton residents, it would have to be voted on by each constituency.
So then I'll jump down to the non-departmental and this is just because these expenditures just really don't live within a specific department and that's why we call it non-departmental. So we have the debt obligation bond for the fire station, which is 130,475. And then we have possible obligations for the payroll benefits fund that could be paying for the, the buyouts for sick leave or, oh, I'm blanking.
Self-insurance for, for unemployment?
Unemployment, thank you. For unemployment employees who are in that. And then the firefighters pension fund, 50,000. So that's, it's, it's just a placeholder for right now, but it's there for us if we need it. So then the $10,098 for fire insurance transfer, this is, this is a request we asked the state based off of the number of firefighters we have working for, within the city. And then this is, once we receive that, SAO says we have to transfer it over. So this is to account for the expenditure to transfer it to.
I have a quick question or statement. So the 220 for the supplemental funding for the street office, this is what normally we would fund out of the general fund, it was usually around 400,000 or 500,000. So this is a reduce in services on our roads.
Well, we're going to make up for that with REIT funding.
Okay.
In 2026, but again, it's fund balance within the REIT fund depending on real estate sales. The one, the one limitation is, is we're limited on how much of those REIT funds can be used for maintenance and operations. So I think it's up to $1 million, which we don't have, or 25% of the total collection.
You can only, yeah, you can, total collection for maintenance projects.
Yeah.
So we, we think we'll be back up to the 400,000, or arrange then?
Correct, correct. Yeah. And so the REIT funds would, you know, maybe used for the capital projects, right?
Okay.
And then the general fund allocation to use for the maintenance projects.
Got it. Thanks.
Yes. And if, if anybody has any questions regarding the, the amounts in the yellow, please say Because then we go back, now we're back down to the street fund and I will let public works speak to those.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Jay Harris, Public Works Director. I have Brent Armstrong here, our Assistant Public Works Director. So on the street fund for 2026, we have $30,000 allocated. This is from REIT II funds for the railroad avenue paint improvement. The red paint needs to be replaced in some crosswalks. We want to try to use a better paint in the median so we don't have to do it as often. We're hoping we find a product. The crosswalk paint is really good, very stable, but it's very expensive. So, so we're going to be doing some work on railroad. We also have $100,000 for in-house painting with Mason County. We haven't looked at the exact neighborhood yet. If you remember, in 2024, we did Front Street down here, I'm sorry, 2023, 2024, we're up on Capitol Hill. We were up in the Mountain View Zone this, this last summer and we tried to move around the city a little bit with the, the in-house painting with Mason County. That went, went very, very well. And I didn't get the backside of mine copied, Brent. I gave it to you, I guess. So also in the capital improvement fund, this is still streets that we're going to afford $200,000, $100,000 from REIT II, $100,000 from TBD. This is for the street tree and sidewalk project. This will enable us to hopefully, if the estimating is coming in right, we're going to bid soon, to be able to take care of the majority of the spots downtown. There's some on Coda, some on a few of the side streets and a whole bunch on railroad. When the bids come in though, we can gauge that. The bid schedule is set up so we can take some money out of the project, maybe not use all this if we decide, if the bids come in in higher or lower, so we can sort of move that package around. This is just a budget, a placeholder for the engineer's estimate right now so we can move the project to bidding. And then we have a half a million dollars for Lyndick Highway North using traffic impact fee funds. So the traffic impact fee funds can only be spent on capacity projects. So we got a grant from the Transportation Improvement Board of 3.6 million dollars to go improve the payment conditions up there. With that, we spoke to you about some of the cross-sections in your study section. We're adding bike lanes as part of the grant. We have to put bike lanes on the roadway. We're also looking at some signalization improvements at K Street that the, with the bike lanes, especially if we go with the two-way bike lanes like council was talking about, we're going to have to do some improvements to the signal controller to allow that sort of thing. And it's likely we're going to put in left turn permissive, yellow flashing arrows like we put in at the high school that allows the left turns to go in and out with that. That's it for the street projects. Does anybody have any questions? And I just hit the highlights. I didn't hit every one of them. Okay, Brent, you're up with water.
So water we have, as, as joint with several other utilities, is a new construction inspector. It's split out between Water Street, Superstorm for, to help with inspections as well as projects so we can kind of do more of our in-house inspecting so that any big new developments that come in comes with a lot of inspection. So we're ramping that up as, as well as helping out with our current project load for, so we can self, self-perform some inspections. And then another combination one is we have budgeted to upgrade our asset management system. We've been vetting over the last year, going through several different vendors on asset management systems that tie into our GIS. So we can inventory, get into the preventative maintenance a lot better, update our maps, all of that. And we haven't landed specifically on one, but we're narrowing it down and we have some budgetary numbers to reflect that. The Mountain View Pressure Zone, the 500,000, we have for Department of Commerce grant and that's to design the new reservoir. We have preliminary talks and figuring out the final location for that and getting it designed. So then, once we get it designed, then we can go out and try and secure funding for the construction of it. And kind of tied to that is upgrading our well one pump and some piping so we can tie it into the upper Mountain View system, the Mountain View system as well as the downtown zone that it's tied into. And doesn't do us any good to build the tank if we can't fill it. So it just gives us more redundancy on every single one of our wells being able to fill. So it just gives us more redundancy on every single one of our wells being able to fill each reservoir.
Yeah, so being tied into all three pressure zones, we currently really don't have that capability right now. So replacing the 1989 pumping motor in there and then also putting a variable frequency drive on it. It's sort of a soft start for the motor, allows it to ramp up slowly and ramp down slowly, will really extend the service life. The only reason why the well one pumping motor is still running is prior, we just got done with the gravity project, the well one to the high school tank, that line's pressurized now. It was a gravity here before, the pump didn't have to work very hard. So it's working quite a bit harder now. We need to replace that asset.
Sewer Fund has a pipe removal project that we're investigating, has a lot of permitting involved with it. And we're doing an investigation on what it would do if we removed that pipe to the bridges. So we're working with several stakeholders, Wash Dot Tribe Fisheries to get that project underway. And Stormwater, we have the Canyon Creek bypass. We are investigating that. There's some maintenance issues that we need to go in and remedy where the pipe connection comes down. It comes down a very steep slope and then connects into a smaller pipe. And we're looking into doing repairs for that as well as updating our Stormwater Comp Plan. And with that, we'll come and hold a new capital facilities plan for their Stormwater Department. So you'll see a whole new capital list when we're developing that plan. As well as Boot Hill Cleanup, which if you're familiar with it, Boot Hill was where a lot of our sweepings got deposited out by the Park and Ride on Highway 3. We got contacted by the state, they want us to do some investigation on that and see if we need to remove portions of that and just take it to a certified landfill.
Those are 30, 40 more years old.
Yeah.
That have been in place out there, yeah. It's one of those legacies, much like the C Street landfill, that have been inherited and now we get to we get to deal with it.
Yeah, and with with all departments, the utility departments, you'll see some vehicles that we're going to surplus out our older aging fleet and using the enterprise lease, replace some vehicles. And then into our Emanar Fund, we have new forklifts, some sander hangers and a new shop truck. I think the shop truck is at 81 or at 84 right now, so we're looking to upgrade that. And then you'll see at the bottom, the backhoe loader and hook lift truck are just rollovers from last year because it's taking that long to get those type of vehicles. So they're ordered, but they won't arrive until 26. So if there's anything on this list that I didn't touch on that you have questions on, I can answer those.
Have any questions? The Mountain View Pressure Zone Reservoir, that is the tank that the 2.5 million gallon tank that we're going to need in the future for for growth, correct?
Yes, and we're looking to, we're looking into options to be able to build it next to our current Mountain View reservoir. But we also want to look into being able to utilize it in the Upper Mountain View and Mountain View Zone.
It takes about three years to build that, correct?
By the time we get.
Design and build.
Design and build, but we still need construction funding for that. And then also, once the tank's built, the high school tank is structurally deficient. It's built in the 50s, it needs to go offline. Likely, the Capitol Hill tank will be down the road in the next 10 years or so. The Mountain View tank, the Angle Side tank, they're all going to have to domino out in the next 20-year period or maybe 30. These tanks were built in the 60s, 50s, early 70s, and they're steel tanks. They're not seismic and they've been coated okay. But steel tanks just don't have, you know, 100-year service life like a concrete tank would. So down the road, we need to invest in these water facilities. Also, half million gallon tanks are for a growing community, we need larger tanks. I came from a community twice as large as this. We had 8 million gallons of water and three, 3, 3 million gallon tanks or 2.5 million tanks. So we need larger tanks. They're larger assets, but you're only maintaining one larger footprint at that point. It's likely we're going to be looking at glass line tanks like we're doing at the membrane treatment plant. We put the bid up for that. It's glass lined on the interior and exterior, which it's more expensive, but we don't have to recode those tanks every decade or so. And we should give much longer service life out of them. Hopefully get out to the 75-year range with very minimal maintenance. And if and if they do need maintenance, they're bolted together, you can take the panels off, take the takedown, obviously. Take the panel off, replace it or fix it and put it back up there again. So these bolted tanks will be real interesting. We'll be talking to you folks more about that with the membrane, the reclaimed water tank that come up with that bid award.
My my comment was, I was kind of, how many homes can we build now with the current water supply that we have? Not the supply, the storage?
Yeah, so once we get the Angle Side Pressure Zone Project out to bid and done, this is the Upper Angle Side Station that needs just getting recommissioned. That will give us about 700 to 1,000 residential units up there. Currently, we're deficient in the, in the, I'm sorry, in the Mountain View Zone also. And with Olympic Heights, some of the improvements they're doing, they're going to eliminate the dead storage in that tank. And we gain, oh, probably about another 600, 500 units. And then the only tank we currently have surplus in today is the Upper Mountain View Zone. And Olympic Heights is tapped, they ran the line down from the high school or the YMCA and brought the Upper Mountain View water in. That's the only zone we have excess capacity as of today. But in the next seven months, I'll be happy to report that I think we'll have capacity in all of our pressure zones, just limited capacity. So we need a new, we need a new tank. And we need to take at least the high school tank offline. We're having, there's structural problems with the rough struts right now.
And the high school tank is just above the library at the end of Burke Street there. Upper Mountain View is out by Mason County Public Works shop. And then Mountain View is up off La Crosse, up near, you know, behind behind Olympic College.
Any questions about Public Works? All right, next.
I just wanted to mention the Tourism Fund. There's nothing in there because the advisory committee has not had the ability to get together in time for to bring you this document. So I believe there's a meeting scheduled?
We'll have a meeting before the year, most likely. Most likely recommendations will come after the first year with a supplemental.
Yeah.
In order to, in order to fund those projects.
We'll bring that supplement.
We'll continue moving forward to get those projects and those requests reviewed by the by the advisory committee and bring recommendations to the council.
And some of these amounts look like they're doubled. It's just because we have to recognize the transfers as expenditures. So the state makes us account for every expenditure, which these transfers do count as part of this this budget. So it looks a little odd, but we have to recognize that. So we do not go over the expenditure amounts, especially for general fund. Is there anything else that you wanted to touch on?
I don't have anything else tonight.
So other than that, if anybody has any other questions?
Do we have any questions tonight?
Just a comment. I am just somewhat satisfied with what we're doing for this budget because we are making sure that we have the infrastructure for tomorrow. Because if we don't have the water and the roads, we're not going to grow out the glory out of this. Also, we need to also reinvest in our people and the human infrastructure that we have, not just the roads and the water, but in our people. And we're we're doing that a little bit tonight. But I'm really concerned that we need, I'd love to have another HR person so we can start hiring and get more people on here and start building more and start not just surviving but thriving. And I I'm hoping that in the future, we can make your jobs easier by taking away all the different cross-cutting responsibilities you guys are all taking on. And then we get people dedicated, more people dedicated to their jobs and working on that forward and not having to hire it out for other people, which is going to be more costly in the future. So I'd like us to start growing and stop, we need to start hiring and stop firing. And that's my message for us tonight. And thank you for what we've done and accomplished tonight. And everyone in the council for going through all the exercises that we did to solidify our priorities and that we are, we are not cutting public safety. In fact, that's the only thing that we're increasing is our workforce. So we've had, we've got a really good strategy for the future to take care of our infrastructure, the water and the streets that we need to grow. And for our public safety, that has become, that is a priority of our council. So this is the way to go. And I'm sorry we couldn't get it exactly on budget, but if we can remain in an area where we can keep growing and stop cutting, cutting, cutting and start growing, 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 that we'll be in a better place in the future. And I'm glad that we're preserving some of that tonight.
All right, we got ahead of ourselves. Let's have a public comment, anybody sign up for a public comment?
We don't have anyone.
All right. So now do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, may I have a reading of ordinance number 2035-1025?
Ordinance number 2035-1025. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, adopting the budget for the calendar year 2026.
Mr. Mayor, I think we moved forward ordinance number 2035-1025 to the November 18 action agenda for further consideration.
It's 2036.
No, 36 is wrong.
Okay.
No, it was wrong, we'll change it.
Okay.
So we have a second?
Yeah.
All right. Now we have comments or questions. Thank you, Terry, and your team for all your hard work. And I know you picked up a lot after Mike left us and you've been doing a great job. And also, I forgot to thank Jay and also for his hard work with the sewer treatment plant and everybody involved, management as well. So but. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you for all your help. You jumped in when we needed you and you got it done for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
More than once, right, Terry?
Yep. Yep.
Over the years. You've heard me say, you know, budget season never ends.
Yep.
It's an ongoing process. We particularly when you're when you're budgeting with unreserved balance to be utilized, we need to monitor that really closely. And it's incumbent upon all our departments to do that really on a daily basis. And I appreciate their efforts, I appreciate the efforts to get to this point today. And I appreciate their efforts moving forward to to make sure that we maintain this budget appropriately and we make sure that we're as sustainable as we can be. It's it's a testament to a great staff here, it really is. This is a lot of work.
All right. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion, the second, to forward ordinance number 2035-1025 to November 18 action agenda for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. We are now exiting our meeting and going into a regular meeting. And we have no action items tonight. And Mark, do you have city manager?
Yeah, just a couple of things I want to recognize. Again, our great staff, our Public Works crews are working on demolition of two structures that went through abatement process. They're hearing examiner at 7th and and Park Street, so they're currently turning those down. It took us a little longer than than, you know, we anticipated. But again, we're doing that in-house and frankly, a lot of those crews that we're utilizing are with our street department or our Stormwater Department. And there's a lot of things going on these days, so we got to those. There's one more to do on 7th Street again. We've got a few more abatements coming up on our schedule, a few more houses that are burnt and there's no more action moving to those. But that's part of our investment in our neighborhoods and our communities of removing these derelict houses. We don't see a return on those, so we lean those properties afterwards for our true costs. Submit that lien to the county. Those are placed on the property. We don't see that return until that property sells at some point. So either that's tax foreclosure or if the property owner sells it, you know, through their own private transaction. So a lot of these don't, you know, don't come for some time. We were lucky enough at 1411 Railroad a year and a half ago, two years ago, to get that fairly quickly. But we just received earlier this year funds from the structure on Grove Street that we abated in 2018. So but it is an investment in our community, right? It's part of code enforcement, it takes some time and effort, but it's it's really worthwhile when we can remove some of these properties from from our neighborhoods.
And we do receive interest when we get.
We do receive interest, yes, yes.
We're not.
Yes, yeah.
All right, anybody have anything for Mark? Does the council have any new item for discussion? If I was going to bet money on tonight's meeting, I would have lost. I thought it was going to last longer than this. So let's talk about our next meeting. Oh, Veterans Day is next Tuesday, so we will not be here. And the next meeting on the 18th outside of our consent agenda, we're going to have more action items from from tonight. So yeah, nothing, nothing else. This this meeting is adjourned at 7:26 PM.